Good evening and welcome to our school committee meeting. Today is Thursday, January 3rd, 2019. If everyone would stand for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast on WCTV. And an audio recording is being made by Mrs. Ruiz. First on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to address the committee? Seeing no one, we'll move to the next item. Right. Okay, next on the agenda is good news. Does anyone have any good news to share? Anyone? So, I would just like to say, welcome back to everyone who's been on vacation. And tomorrow, it's today Thursday, so tomorrow night and Saturday at the high school, the girls' basketball team is collecting items for the homeless. They have a game tomorrow night and a game Saturday afternoon. So, they're just looking for donations of toothbrushes, socks, and deodorant. So if anyone is able to make those donations, they'd be thrilled to get them. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the report of the student representative. Unfortunately, she's not here tonight. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Would you like to come and join us?
Hi.
Good evening.
So, before we went on break, the student advisory council, we talked to the retired board that came to do like the district review. And there's four of us that are part of the student advisory committee. And they just like asked us questions, basically more about the high school versus like the other schools. And we just told them everything about the high school, just the basics of like classes that are ran and like extracurricular activities and sports and things like that. Our next project, we're starting to prepare for when the weather gets warmer for that outdoor seating area for lunch. We're not sure how much money we're gonna have. But we're, our main focus is getting a fence up because then we do already have benches. But if we have extra money left over, then we'll get more benches, nicer benches. And we also, if we add, if we get more money, we'll redo the cement outside. And then, we also sent out a survey. Last time I was here, I said we were gonna do that, but we decided to send it after break. So, everybody will remember to do it. Some of the questions were... Would you like to utilize the late bus if it was brought back for the two weeks at the end of each term? Because right, grades close and kids start to freak out because grades aren't where they want to be. And also during, when we're preparing for midterms and finals. Would you like to utilize an outside eating area if it was available during lunches? I think we'll get a lot of feedback on that, especially when it's like nice days out, we'll like to sit outside. Do you get enough information regarding events occurring at school? So, we do have like the morning announcements. But I know there's some, there's the kids that do the Bridgewater enrollment and they don't get to hear the morning announcements. So if they don't hear something, then they might miss like a meeting for a club or like if there's a game. And if there's any improvement that they would like to see in classrooms? Like if more teachers should like utilize Google Classroom or something like that? And then, our fifth question was just if they had any other like suggestions? Like anything else that they wanted to include? Things are going around at the high school. Next week, DECA, we're going to districts, the 10th and 11th. And then, I know there's a lot of basketball games going on.
Are you competing at the DECA competition?
Yeah, I am.
What category are you competing in?
Business management principles.
Well, good luck.
Thank you.
So when you get back the results of your survey, will you come back and tell us what those, about the results? Does anyone have any questions?
Just since DECA was brought up, how do you think we're looking this year?
We've, something I think we've done differently is we've done workshops this year. So, like older DECA members that have been in, we were required to go to three. So each day, there was like a different like preparation. So like one day was like how to dress for DECA. Or one day was like good like, like speaking to, like how to speak to your judges. Or there were ones in like certain categories, so we were required to go to three. So I think everybody got a better look on things. And we did take a field trip to UMass Dartmouth. That was kinda like a DECA, like it was like we're going to competition, but it didn't really count. And that helped prepare us too. So we're getting a lot more preparation than we have in like the past years.
Where are districts?
Hyannis.
Is it overnight?
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you for filling in. Thanks. Did you have another question, Mike? Okay, all right. Next on the agenda are approval of minutes of the meeting from December 20th, 2018. Does anyone have any questions or comments about those minutes?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, 3-0-0. Next on the agenda is the update on the elementary building project.
Yes, I received a letter from the historical commission. This is a letter that we've been waiting on to let us know if we needed additional archaeological work done on a boundary. And as we thought, we will need some extra surveying being done. Because in 1965, there's a human skeleton remains that were found during construction of a water line to the elementary school. And unfortunately, the archaeologists did not determine where they were found. So we're going to have to have a little bit more surveying being done. But this is being worked on now by our project manager. So we're, we're still making the progress. We do expect to go out to bid in late March.
Thank you. Next up is the appointment of the school nurse.
I'd invite Mrs. Siemens to come up because it will be at Minnet Elementary. And you have their resume in front of you.
Good evening.
Good evening. So I bring forth to you our nurse candidate for your consideration and approval. Her name is Ms. Tara Mitchell. She's coming to us with experience working in a school setting. She's currently working in a charter school and she's also worked in a public school before. What I'm not sure if you are aware of with school nurses is they have to be certified through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So they have to pass the MTELS, just like the teachers have to pass them, which she has done. And she's also passed her national certification examination for school nurses. So that goes above and beyond as well. I would just like to thank Mrs. Fay, Mrs. Sheila Braley, the nurse from Deacon's, and Mrs. Sue Akins, the nurse from middle school, who was on the interview team. This is the candidate that we all unanimously approved. And I would also like to thank Mrs. Braley and Mrs. Akins for coming in during school vacation, as well as Mrs. Fay and myself, because we had one other candidate to interview who happens to be the one that we're putting forth with you tonight. So I am recommending this candidate and hope you approve her.
Any questions?
How many candidates were there?
So, we went through the number of candidates who applied and we were able to narrow it down to three candidates who had the qualifications that we needed for this position. So we interviewed three.
And what stuck out particularly about Ms. Mitchell?
Her experience in the school setting, just some of her answers that we appreciated. Obviously, she has a love for children, she works well with families. She has a good rapport with the staff, she has a good rapport with the students that she works with. Her experience with various medical needs of students that we currently have in our buildings as well. She has children of her own, so.
And was it concerning that she really bounced around quite a bit, like every year?
It was not a concern to us, just based on what she has to say. You know, some positions were only temporary. She wanted to get into a school setting, she's working about 55 hours a week right now. So she was looking to have a more set schedule. Sometimes she's working till 5:00 in the afternoon.
And now, this is a Minnet nurse, but she'll obviously be in the middle school. Any opportunities to help each other in that?
They currently do that now, yes. And when one goes to lunch, the other one covers and vice versa.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
What is, what would be the date of her hire?
The Tuesday after Martin Luther King died.
Any other questions?
Yes, but there's separate offices. So when you walk in, Mrs. Akins is on the right and there's another little office immediately off of that. And that's where the school nurse would be. And our school, and also is retiring, I would like to say, I'm really going to miss Mrs. St. Pierre. But she has offered to come back and, and stay and help transition with the new person.
Yeah, and now, well, the middle school building, as you know, they lost the 8th grade, went to the high school. And, you know, so the 3rd and 4th went to the middle school. So now, we're getting a new nurse for the middle, well, Minnet at the middle school. Is there any consideration of maybe adding a nurse to the high school?
I'm sure that if Mr. Palladino would request that, that would be something that we would look at.
Yeah, I think you've heard some, something about some interest in that. All right, thank you.
All right, if there are no other questions, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Sorry. Okay.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, 3-0-0. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is a list of obsolete equipment.
You have two pages. The first page is kitchen inventory for the Minnet Forest. And then you have Wareham High School library surplus. On the kitchen equipment, again, we've brought the schools through to look at the equipment. We've had the high school culinary program through the Minnet kitchen to see if there's anything that they would like to have. Everybody has had ample, ample opportunity to request and move the pieces out that they would need to in their programs. So this is what is left. If you deem this surplus, our next venture would be to reach out to various homeless shelters to see if, and food kitchens, to see if there would be anything here that they would like to have. And if not, then we would look for other ways to dispose of it. As far as the Wareham High School library, this has been on hold for a bit. Now that we're bringing forward other items, this is, will be included. Again, this has all been deemed surplus and out of date. So I would ask you to please deem the following items that you have as surplus.
Anyone have any questions? I guess I don't have any questions. I would just hope that some of this, I know you've been trying to find homes for this stuff. Hopefully, that will happen, that, you know, someone will have a use for it. All right, if there are no other questions, could I have a motion to approve this list as obsolete?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, 3-0-0.
What I would also share would be that people have been hard, working very hard in Minnet to go through the various items and separate them. We're now to the point of where we know what we are going to need to keep and what would, we're going to be bringing to you for surplus. We have had teachers go through. We've, we'll be inviting other buildings to go through, principals to look to see if there's anything there that they would need. We're then going to invite the town to come through and see if there's anything in the building that they could use. I know that there are some tables and some chairs that I've heard some people are interested in. And then after that, we will bring you the list then to deem as obsolete.
Okay, thank you. So next on the agenda is goals of the superintendent for this current year. So we've all received the goals. And because there are only three school committee members out of the four here this evening, we've, we've discussed perhaps moving a discussion of the goals to the next meeting. But certainly, if you have anything you'd like to add.
I'm happy to wait.
Okay, all right. So we will do that. Moving right along. Next on the agenda is a new item on the agenda. So the assistant superintendent has joined us at the table. So every week going forward, we'll have an agenda item for a report from her.
So happy new year, everyone.
Thank you.
So I'm just going to do a quick report on a little tiny part of what happens every day and the level of responsibilities that we attend to. But first, with as far as curriculum is concerned, on January 29th, I will be meeting with the elementary school specialist during the half day to discuss the IB primary years program. That's ages 3 through 12. I have handouts for you to take a look at, just sort of an overview of what that's all about. And we're going to talk about that. The educationally designed school building, where specialists were very involved in the innovation hub that was created. And we'll begin to look at and write curriculum using the Wareham Public Schools' approved curriculum template that is currently being used by grades 4 through 12. The template is a hybrid that incorporates Understanding by Design by Grant Wiggins and J. McTagg and also encompasses the IB practices and philosophies within that template. And that was approved in 2017. I will obviously continue to update the committee. I also wanted to let the committee know and the public know that online, if you go to our website and you go to the district tab and scroll to curriculum, on there, there are two documents that are new. One is an overview of the curriculum that happens in Wareham Public Schools, pre-K through grade 12. And there's also the same overview of the assessments that we do, pre-K through 12. It's a fairly simple document. It's tight, it's long, obviously. The curriculum is about six pages and the assessment is somewhere in that range. Where it just has a quick little example or an explanation of what it is that we're doing. So I thought that people should know that that's there. Grade K through 5, I'm onto assessment, has completed their FAST for their second round of FAST testing. We still need to complete the DRA in kindergarten. And we've chosen a date in January to do that because with kindergarten, we do it one-on-one. All of the testing is one-on-one. So we segmented it out in a group in June, we talked about that. We did the FAST assessment first with them because that's also one-on-one. And then January, we'll do the DRA. So I'll have that information for you at some point. And a formal report will be scheduled. So far, when I pulled this information, evaluations, the leadership team has completed 1,188 walkthrough evaluations so far this year. It's pretty impressive.
How many?
1,188.
District-wide?
Yes. Walkthroughs. It's busy. They're doing a phenomenal job. And that's to the support of all of you and the superintendent for the supporting the budget. Right? We have people who can have manageable caseloads and can spend the necessary time with teachers, which is huge. I also have, in your pocket, is a list of all of the professional development activities that have happened in the district from August until December. That is also a four or five-page document and it lists everything that we've currently done so far. For the strategic plan, Student Voice is a big deal this year, right? We're all over the Student Voice. And so, I was able to attend a 6th grade middle school math class prior to the break. And the students were presenting topics related to math and were very engaged in the process. So I was there to see their projects. They had to problem-solve real-world issues and they, and some used Google Classroom to create their present, and present their work. They were given choice, access to a rubric with clear expectations. There are various other initiatives happening that are incorporating Student Voice as well. For example, in the middle, at the middle, Minnet Middle Makerspace, sorry, there's a lot of Ms.'s. Students were, before, prior to creating, making the space available to students, there was a group of students that were invited in and they actually created the rules on how they would use that space, what needed to happen and how that, how they needed to behave in there and what, what it was for and how they would proceed. There are a lot of things like that happening in the district and it's very exciting. So that's it for me. Any questions?
No questions, but, but just thank you for that. I liked it, I liked the little day in the life of, you know, what you do. It'd be good, it'd be good to hear about that from other positions too.
So I'd really love to come see this space in the library at the...
The Makerspace?
Yes, yes, yeah.
They're doing some pretty cool things over there. It looks great, too.
Well, it's such a great space, I'm really glad that it's being used. So I'll definitely, maybe you can take me over there to visit someday. Also, I want to back up a little. So, I know before the Christmas break, there was a lot of work being done for the district review. And we didn't really acknowledge that. So I just want to say thank you to you and to Dr. Shaverhood and to everyone else who did a lot of work to make that happen. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
About district review, is that all wrapped up now? Is that, and they're just gonna come back with findings and such? When is that due?
Oh, we probably won't see it till the summer.
It takes them a while. The last report, they came in 2012 and we received the report in February of 2013.
Do they do that in every district?
No, they, this year, they did it in 36 districts. Of those 36, 80% were 20% below poverty and below. Just saying.
No, I mean, does, like, how often do they go out? Like, what was that, six years, right? Is that how often?
Five.
So about every five years, they do it?
It's not for everyone. They pick and choose.
Right.
And most of the schools that they choose are poverty in, in lower-income...
Okay.
Schools.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Because we have time.
Yeah, yeah.
And money.
Yeah.
But I mean, we expected it to be night and day compared to the last one, I would, I would think, right?
I can tell you this much, regardless of what they say, our team is a phenomenal machine. They were impeccable, articulate, thoughtful, patient. Listen, asked, being asked the same questions for four days over and over again. And they were just amazing. They, I can't say enough about them. We're very fortunate.
All right, thank you. And next on the agenda is the acceptance of gifts.
Yes, I would recommend that the committee accept the following. $20,000 from the Maurice and Anne Makepeace Family Foundation for 2018 to the Wareham Public Schools. And $500 from ExxonMobil Educational Alliance Program to the middle school to be used in the area of math or science.
So moved.
Could I just ask a question? The 20,000, what will that go towards? What will that be used for?
That goes, that supports students and it supports different programs that we aren't able to fund without that assistance.
So district-wide?
District-wide.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 3-0-0.
The report, before I move into the approval of Bill Warren's, I would just like to share with the committee that the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents will be sponsoring community forums, three of them, on Tuesday, January 8th at 6:00. The locations are Fitch, Pittsburgh State University, Malden High School, and New Bedford Keith Middle School. From there, they invited people to come and speak. I was one of the people they invited. I will be speaking at the table, roundtable at New Bedford. Our topic will be funding and how the funding source in Massachusetts, we really need to find a way to expand our opportunities and expand funding. So what I did to help prepare for this event, I asked the principals to please share with me all the different pieces that they have had to give up over recent years because of lack of funding. And so, we're going to be sharing actual stories from Wareham about how we have had to cut back, make do, and really not to offer our students what we would like to offer them because of the state funding formula. So we, I appreciate the opportunity to share for Wareham and certainly would invite the public. I know the press have been invited and would urge anyone that have questions or would have things that they would like for me to add to please share with me for me to take along for next Tuesday. Also, I would be asking you to approve the bills and payroll. You have it listed on your newsletter. Along with that, the payroll ending on December 29th. It's in the amount of $96,289.19. So I would ask for you to approve the two amounts there.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, 3-0-0.
So, we're still on the report of the superintendent, right?
We are.
Yeah. Just, I didn't think about this during the budget process, it just didn't come up, I heard in the news. I think they're increasing the minimum wage. And are we gonna make sure that we're gonna be paying our employees the minimum wage in this budget?
Yes, in fact, that's one thing that we're working on right now, that we're going to be coming to you to raise some of the salaries that we offer. If you recall, last year, we came to you for, I believe it was bus monitors. And what we want to do is go through each unit to make sure that we have met where we need to meet. For us to do that, though, we need to bring it forward to the committee just so you have that information and then you can approve.
Thank you.
Next are the recommendations from the Policy Review Committee. Turn to Laurie.
There's lots of them. So, the first one is the attendance. There's lots of changes, so I'm probably not going to go over all the changes unless there's any questions. But, I mean, they're highlighted in red. First one is attendance, obviously changed to grade eight to 12. And then, there's multiple changes throughout the whole thing that I'm assuming you guys have had a chance to go over. So, unless there was any questions or concerns?
Well, I have a question, but I don't know if it's for you or for Mr. Palladino. So, the eighth graders now in high school, how is the attendance policy? Has that been a smooth transition as far as the attendance policy?
Yeah, that's not my question.
So, the, excuse me, the policy is aligned with the ninth through 12th-grade students? Has it been smooth? It's still early. But, there's a few kids that are pretty surprised by the fact they're being held accountable to the ninth through 12th policy.
So, is it reasonable to hold them to the same policy, do you think?
Well, the whole, part of the idea of having the eighth graders in the high school is to acclimate them to the expectations.
No, I agree. I agree. So, you did, you did research in other schools that have eighth graders in the high school?
We visited several schools and spoke with even more schools
I know you did.
To fall, to find out, you know, what were the lessons learned? And to a T, they all said, hold them to the same expectations. Once you try and differentiate, it becomes a disaster.
Okay.
So, it's, you know, it's hard to evaluate at the midway point. We're not even there yet. But, certainly, we'll reflect on that at the end of the year and see where we're at.
Okay. I just had one other question, if I could. On the second page, it says, if a student is chronically tardy, that seems hard to measure. It seems subjective.
My note says quantify.
Yeah.
So, I believe the threshold is three in a term.
Okay.
After three, they're considered chronically tardy.
All right.
So, that's...
So, at some point, they find that out? I mean...
It's, right.
Okay.
And it's in the handbook.
Oh, it is? Okay. So, somewhere, it's...
Oh, they have it in writing, and they get reminded every time they come in because the dean has their attendance in front of them on the, on Power School, saying, you know, this is your second tardy. But, in a very short period of time here, we'll be on to term three, and they get a clean slate to start term three. So, they're excited for that.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So...
Yeah, I just had a question. What was the thinking on the third paragraph in deleting basically the bulk of it?
The requirements? The attendance requirements?
So, it says, for the purpose of this attendance policy and record-keeping Wareham High School adheres to the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary School Guidelines and Attendance, and then the rest of it is, like, deleted.
I think because it just, it stated, I mean, for the purpose of the attendance policy, the school adheres to the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Guidelines. I think that kind of stated it all.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly. It was a, like, it just continued on, like, a little too much. It was redundant, talking about, you know, they must be at a school or school-related activity to be counted as present. It just, I mean, that's all in the Elementary and Secondary Education Guidelines on attendance.
Yeah, that, that's, that's one of the frustrating things about the policy review or policies. It's like, you know, why do we even do it? We're just following what the state says, you know?
I think that's the point. We were just trying to clean that up. I mean, we're just doing what the state does, take out why...
So, it's true that a student still has to be at school for half the day to participate?
Yes.
Okay.
And the next page, I think, it says, you know, out-of-school suspension that's being deleted, but it formally said, any student suspended out of school will be considered absent and subject to the school's attendance policy. I didn't know that. So, if you're suspended, you're considered absent? Yeah? Okay. Yeah, well, I know, but being forced out of the building. But, yeah, okay. And I meant to ask Mr. Palladino, what was that? Maybe someone else can answer, but what is the difference formally between the eighth graders and the, and the middle school as far as, as far as the policy? Like, why is it, how different is it in the high school?
It isn't. That's what, this is changing it to make the same attendance policy for, we're crossing out ninth graders, and this is eight to 12.
No, 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 right, but...
Right. Oh, what was it? Was it, sorry?
No, meaning, meaning, like, I guess these kids, they were in for a rude awakening when they got to the high school, and I'd like to know what the difference was.
Oh, oh, oh. I can't speak on that. I don't know off the top of my head what it was in the middle school.
I can, I can speak briefly to it, but I'll go back and do some more research. One of the things that we found with tardies and some attendance, while we counted them at the middle school, it wasn't strictly enforced. And what's happening this year is, especially with tardies and unexcused absences, it's being very strictly enforced. And what we've seen is a decline in the amount of students tardy. So, it's really lining up with what the high school's policy is.
Okay. I like that we're doing that. I just scratched my head at why we weren't, that's all.
Any other questions? So, a motion. Do you want to do each one individually, or do you want to...
I don't know, that's...
Wait a minute, no, we just did one, right?
No, I mean, a vote on each one individually?
Yeah, individually.
Okay.
So, a motion to approve this policy as amended?
So moved.
Am I seconding, second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? 3-0-0.
So, the next is athletic ticket prices. Only change is that it is going, it said, children through eighth grade will not be admitted to football. So, now it would be children through eighth grade, children through seventh grade will not be admitted. So, now that the eighth grade is at the high school, they will be able to attend football, basketball, or ice hockey games at the high school.
Okay. I was reading it the opposite way. So, now...
It originally said...
Grade eight?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay. Motion to approve as amended?
So, I have a question, just like, are we enforcing that now? I mean, do we, do we not let kids in if they don't have a parent with them? I don't think so, right?
I think it's more of football, football games. Because they run around...
I know, I get the reasoning, but I don't, I don't ever see any kids being turned away.
Well, being a person that stood at the gate...
Yep.
I could tell you that there was 90% of the time, there was always an adult with a group of students as they moved through.
All right, so moved.
Second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? 3-0-0.
So, next is early graduation. The only few changes or only change is the, in accordance with the attendance policy, student has, student has good attendance record and then striking in accordance with the attendance policy or adding in accordance with the attendance policy?
Adding.
Adding. Thank you. Which we just amended, so...
Okay. Any questions?
Which policy are we on right now?
Early graduation.
Early graduation, got it. Yeah, I just had one question at the, at the beginning. It's under A. Student has criteria for early graduation, full-year release. A, student has grade C or better for first two years. Is that GPA or per course, or what, what is that?
It's an average.
So, so if they have at least a C, then we just, we're okay? Kind of, we're just saying, you can go?
You can just come up here and do the rest of them. Come on up.
There's usually mitigating circumstances as to why they're looking to graduate early. It's not used very often, but a lot of times, it's for family or personal reasons why students want to leave early. I think in my tenure, I've had two students graduate early.
Two?
Two.
The whole time?
The whole time.
And it's never for, like, people wanting to join the military early or anything like that?
Not in those cases. But, it could be, obviously, but not in those cases. One was for personal reasons. She needed to graduate to work to support the family. The other one was, she was a dual-enrolled, dual-enrolled student who had the criteria. And in both cases, they had higher than a C GPA.
And I know you, you tend to raise the bar pretty high, and you're, you're okay with this.
Because there could be circumstances where, you know, it could preclude a student who really needs that for personal reasons. I know what you're saying, you know, should you have it at an 85 average? And our department heads, we, we spoke many times about this, you know, is this high enough of a threshold? But, we felt like there are some circumstances where a kid, because of a family situation, needs to be able to graduate early. But, keep in mind that there are other requirements as well. This student has to, pretty much, be ahead of the game anyway. But, we felt like keeping it there allows for that situation, like that one student. So, that's, that's, you know, again, conversations we've had with department heads on that policy, and that was their feelings.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You might as well just stay. What's the next one?
I'll come back up if needed.
Thank you.
All right.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? 3-0-0.
So, empowered digital use. Please don't make me go through all the changes on this. It's literally adding digital instead of network to every single paragraph.
So, this is just replacing the network policy?
Exactly. It's the exact same policy, just changing it from network to empowered digital.
Mm-hmm.
So, going through every single paragraph, wherever it said network, it now says either digital or empowered digital use.
Okay.
So moved.
Any questions? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? 3-0-0.
Oh, my God, am I done?
No.
So close. Student activity account. Maybe. If I can find it. I have it right here. So, oh, I guess it does. So, student activity account. The only change would be the last page. Section 41D, annually notify all students of their required actions and an activity, if an activity ceased to exist. And the source, where it came from.
Okay.
There's a lot of information in this one, but that's the only change.
Mike, do you have questions?
Yeah. So, there is, there's a ton of information in this one, and then some of the other ones, too. Were they all, were they all taken care of during one meeting?
No, I wasn't here for, was this all one meeting?
No, 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 no. Policy review meeting. Were they all done in one policy review meeting?
Yes. These were all the last one.
Yeah. And, and who attended? Did, did you have a good turnout?
Yeah. First meeting, there was 12, and second was 10.
But, for this particular meeting?
10.
10, yeah. And, so, I mean, there's a lot here, but, I mean, if, if the principals, how many, who was there for principals?
Tracy, Bethany.
Yeah. Just, I did have some other questions. Let's see. So, I notice on number 14, it says, a monthly report should be submitted to the business manager by the school principal, parentheses, or designee. If a designee, it must be approved by the school principal. The monthly report should include, but... Is that happening now? Are they, are they, is Sue getting monthly reports?
She's receiving...
Okay, because I was going to maybe change that from should to shall, but it's happening?
Yes. That's something that we watch very closely, just because this student activity account is an account that gets audited
Okay.
quite a bit on a regular basis in all school districts. And it's also one of the areas because of the cash flow coming in and out so quickly, and it's an area that we keep very close eye on.
And when you say it gets audited, is that audited by the auditors that do the town audit? So, they specifically want to look at these ones?
They do.
And here, it says internal and external audit for both.
And I would also share that information is also sent to the town treasurer. So, he keeps an eye on this as well.
And I'd just like to hear someone describe, maybe Mr. Palladino, number 16. It says here that the school principal or designee shall maintain individual subsidiary accounts by program within the student activity control account. I'd like to hear about these subsidiary accounts.
Told you, you should have stayed.
You said that. You did warn me.
I'm always right.
So, the student activities accounts are, for the high school, set up as one large account with line items for each account underneath there. And every month, there's a reconciliation that's done. I get a copy of it, and anytime there's a deposit, I sign off on that, as does our high school accountant. So, there's, there's quite a paper trail on all this.
All right. So, when, for example, the GATM, they donate, you know, from the DECA, the stand, right? Does that go to student activities, or where does that go?
So, the, the DECA is student activities. So, we're actually ironically moving everything into student activities. There was a DECA booster club that's been around for quite some time, and we're shutting that down and moving everything into student activities.
Okay.
So, any, any fundraising that's done goes into student activities and has to be used by the students. Anything where there's a fee goes to the school department, to the revolving account.
Okay, that, that explains it, okay? Okay. Number 32. Dispersment exceeding $600 in aggregate to any one individual or entity must be reviewed to determine if a Form 1099 MISC is required. Must be reviewed by who?
That would be by the accountant, by myself. Our student activities account is really a, it's either reimburse or, there's, there's not someone who's being paid.
Right, no.
It's, it's never in that, in that case. I'm sure it could come up at some point, but I know why there's a $600 threshold there. But, ours are either, they're ordering something, and we're cutting a check, and they have an order, and we have an invoice, or they're getting reimbursed for something they purchased for students out of their pocket. So, it's, it's never something where someone's being paid, like, a salary, if you will.
No, no, yeah. So, it's just like, it's really clear in here that the principal is responsible for, like, everything.
It's scary.
So, who's doing the reviewing if it's the principal? And so, that's...
It's the accountant for the high school and myself. And as Dr. Shaverhood said, we get audited, I believe it's every three years, we pay for an audit of all the student activities, and, and obviously, everything goes through the business office as well. It's, it's really in a great place right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
The other thing is, it's very clear that any funds in, in this must go to students.
Yeah.
And it cannot go toward anything else. If I thought a picture was pretty, I certainly could not buy it out of this account.
Right.
If I did, I might be visited by the auditors.
Okay, I know.
Okay. Is it true that much of what's in this policy is law? Is it?
And, yes. And I just can't stress enough how closely student activity accounts are looked at statewide. That's, that's just high-profile.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Is there a motion to approve as amended?
So moved. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? 3-0-0. Next on the agenda are school committee, subcommittee assignment updates. So due to the resignation, there were a couple of openings on subcommittees that needed to be filled. The first one is policy review. So that opening will be filled by me. There's an opening on the onset Women's Club Scholarship Subcommittee. That will just wait until April. There's no need to fill that now. Two negotiation committees. The first one is the secretaries' negotiation subcommittee. That opening will be filled by me. And the one on the custodians' subcommittee, that will be filled by Laurie Spear. Are there any questions or... Next, there were two sets of minutes from executive sessions, one on June 26, 2018, and one on August 23, 2018. And I'm just informing you that those minutes have been released. There's no vote necessary. Is there any other business? Anyone has that was not anticipated? Did I miss anything on the agenda? You checking on me here? All right, and we'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Good night.